We don't give a shit.
I didn't, I didn't really talk about that, guys, because you know that needs to happen.
Yeah, because I mean, you, you guys asked us for, um, for, for money. You asked us to, to vote this money in, we voted the money in. Where's it going? Well, we got a new piece of equipment, so I want a new horn going. Hadn't worked. It's not fair. And like, like, we asked for O R C number. Mister Wolf, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
Well, and I, I, I wonder if I didn't have my book today, I was stuck at the airport working on something today. Uh, I meant to ask you these numbers, I waited. This all this time, because I knew you wouldn't give me an answer. You owe me three O R C numbers.
Okay, you left them for us to do. What you want?
I just told you I was at the airport today, working on something, I didn't bring my book.
What time you can call me?
No, 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 you don't answer it, and I know you tell a lie.
I just take it out of book and send it to you.
You know what? Everybody do that?
Yeah.
I'm like the big time lawyer, I rest my case, thank you. And let's try to get along, guys, come on now. But I'm serious, that's a lot of money. How much was the generator?
About six thousand.
You say it runs sometime and it quit. It's a losing spark of fuel, since you don't know about that, you can't, you can't comment. But there's only two things that make the engine run, spark and fuel.
Actually, I got a comment for that.
Go ahead.
We spent two hundred and forty thousand updating those ambulances. They did a complete down-to-bare metal, metal restoration, new doors.
No, we didn't, no, it didn't. No, well, you can't argue, because I, I won by the last time. You bought a-
This isn't a debate.
No, 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 listen to me, you bought a catch, stay in your lane, you bought a cab and chest. They put the new stuff on it, the only thing they rebuilt was the box.
Then pull the specs and read it. That's my understanding.
But you don't understand what you're reading. You bought a brand-new cab and chest.
So, you spent two hundred and forty grand, you didn't replace the generators, went into heart and soul to operate the ambulance, you don't have air conditioning, you don't have power.
Why, why?
Why didn't that happen when you ordered them?
Why?
Why, why do we do that?
Why?
I didn't tell you why.
You said it was more money than you bought it.
I didn't tell you why.
That was decided between you and Butts.
No, but I'm not involved in that, I talked to Butts afterwards, and I asked him, after he's already gone, but that was done, Steve was in that conversation. It was because they were three times the price that we're paying today.
That's what you said in the last meeting, but okay, here's the question. There's only, there's only three things that make an engine work. Fuel, spark. The third thing you don't need, because you're standing, you're lying, come on, I'm lying to you. Air, we don't need that, we all feel hot air. So, we don't need to worry about the air, because we all hauling hot air out here right now. So, are we losing fuel or spark? And an older generator, you know, look at airplane, this is nineteen twenty-nine, it's flying, and it still work. I know, because I worked on it forty-two today, extension. So, just because, you owe, should we put you out of the field?
He's kidding me. Kevin Niles.
I go. My favorite stories, I've seen, and it is true, this is a trade record. I guess, as a resident, this doesn't make me feel very comfortable. I'm glad to be here.
Kevin, can you say your name again?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm doing this. Kevin Niles, eighty-one eighty-three mile road, thank you. Hoping for progress, hoping to see what you'll form with this, man, I'd really like to see you guys, like, work together and get some things done, whatever that jam was over. I have confidence and hope.
Thank you.
Because you gotta have that, and I hope we get there. So, I asked this question a few months ago, and it's just something near and dear to my heart, about the fire station in Liberty. How we're doing with that, and I know we're talking about, I think that station's sixty, am I right?
Fifty-nine.
That's fifty-nine, okay. So, that, that's what I'm, I'm hearing, you're talking about the bathroom station fifty-nine, and there's a, this conversation about the money between, uh, I think it's fifty-seven thousand when it was, and it's up to sixty-three thousand, something like that. So, yeah, so there's about five, six thousand dollars difference, so, um, I, I guess, when we come to the meeting, and we have a resolution, and we're looking to, you know, making a, make a decision on something like that. I guess I don't understand how we come to the meeting, and we can't make a decision on that. And I know there was something with money that, you know, you don't know what the amount is, and I'm thinking, this building gotta have Wi-Fi, you have a laptop, and pull it up and say, yes, it's there, or not, I mean, is it that simple, or is it not that simple?
Well, the issue was my, for me was that I did not get the resolution, I, I was in the resolution until five minutes before the meeting. That was my issue.
So, I mean, we have these, we planned this for two weeks at a time, and we had these, and I do, I, I just feel uncomfortable that the fire station clutches to my house. I know that we've got backup that coming in from New Lebanon, Trowler, or Moraine, or whatever it is, but, I mean, there, this time, this fire station's less than a mile from my house. New Lebanon's four miles away. Trowler's further away, Moraine's further away, so, the house right across the street burnt down, you know. And that's a problem, and it just doesn't, it's just been dragging out for a long time, and I really wanna see something happen there. I drive by it a couple times a day, and maybe I'm missing it, but nothing's going on there, and I, come on, guys, we got it, this is, there are fire trucks, and generators and crap, this is emergency medical. And this is the thing that we say to people's lives, and I just don't know what's taking us so long to get it off, you know, to get it off the stepping stone, so, you know. Probably have a question, just stating how I feel about things, I wanna see things moving forward and happens, so, thanks.
Welcome.
Welcome to B Z A. Padway.
Padway, fifty-one oh three Alton. I'll say this again, I do not understand why you can't do anything for the house, actually. I don't, I'm not talking about dogs or nothing else, I'm talking about rats. You wanna see the rats, I'll show you the rats. You wanna see the rats? There they are.
How many did you kill with that?
Since Saturday, I've killed fourteen rats. And I'm talking about, uh, mouths, I'm talking about rats. And they're coming from that house.
Isn't that, I'm, I'm gonna back for it today, it's, it's on, uh, let's see, address that.
Fifty-one oh three Alton, I talked to you yesterday.
Yes, and I'm by that house today, I can just move by it. And, uh, isn't the back, we was looking on that, till we got bored that up there?
You can't, I can't see into the yard, because of the, uh, the weeds have grown into trees. Your people have cut the grass, and they put all the grass up to the door, all across the front of the building. So, I don't understand why y'all can't do something, Homer, Homer has been dead for a long time.
Steve, what's it take to get a house boarded up that's insecure, so it's, it's, I've been to, I've, I went to that house you speak with, oh, you've been there, or not, the back end is open?
And, what's it, what's it?
Five oh nine nine is the address.
Huh?
Five oh nine nine is the address, the gentleman that has passed away that owns it, it's still in his estate.
Okay.
There's no one, uh, responding to letters.
Okay.
They, we, so we continue to mow the grass and assess the property.
The health department has to do anything to do with animals, attached, it has no jurisdiction to me, so.
But, but can we, can we close the house up?
Well, yeah, that, they could do that for, you know, we do that as a letter, and we have to get-
What's the point of closing the house up now? What's the point?
Can they get the property made?
When the people on the other side have been getting out of there.
I'm not here to debate the state of Ohio law, that was made, we didn't make it.
Ken, the question you need to know is, can you get the property made, like they used to do? You tell them you have a problem, you call downtown, they make your property.
This, the health department is not responsible.
Tell them how she can get some help.
We don't have an option?
We called the health department.
What, what did they tell you? What did they tell you?
That they were gonna come out and look. Hell, you can't even get in the backyard, or whatever.
Well, the backyard, the department, you only want to-
The backyard's not been cut?
No, it's been cut once.
Yeah, it's been cut.
Once. Once.
But, I think boarding it up would help a lot, it's, it looks like, I don't know, it looks like there's been somebody staying in there from time to time.
Uh, they do. When you board it up, they unboard it up, and one of the members in the house next door would live in it.
Not back door, maybe?
No.
There's nobody in there.
Uh, I've heard.
They were, they were.
Fifty-nine nine?
They were going in and out of there.
Yeah.
Uh, when they first, uh, moved there, they were using the house for whatever. And somebody came and said that they were gonna board the back door up, and they never did.
What's our policy to get that done, Steve, you know?
Just run it through another hand.
Everybody, whatever, get on there and, can we start that? Start that open up?
There's a white paper up there.
No, start the one morning. And then, um, so, will, I, I don't know, will the, uh, humane society, will the dog people, will somebody throw a bunch of bait in there for a-
I don't know anything about that now, somebody else did, that's, that's-
They used to do that, I mean, they don't do that anymore?
I don't know, I'm asking, I, I-
Yeah, we can't get them to respond out here, we've got people that don't have bathrooms, or water, and electric, and they're dumping feces in the ditches. And, and the health department will be able to come out and look at that, and we show them the video.
Man, I haven't seen rats in years.
We, we have a problem, but our, our county, our department's not real fine.
I tried. I tried.
I've been there eleven years, and I've never had this until this year. I've called, we might have had a mouth, you know? Because this is bad. We'll be sitting there, and they just run across your, uh, just run across you. My, uh, husband has a bird feeder, and we had to take that down, we had to take it down. Because they were out there feeding off of the, uh, bird feeder, with the birds. I ain't never seen that before.
Years ago, there was a, a rat infestation, can you all find out what they did back then? Because somebody came in, and they took care of that issue, and it's just starting to come back.
Here, I tell you, put your dogs up, your animals up, and they take care of it.
I'm trying a lot of mine, trying to kill this.
And Mister, Mister, we're not trying to debate with you.
No, no, I'm, I'm explaining the facts.
I mean, but you said we're not here to debate with you, but we're just trying to-
Live here.
Oh, yeah, I'm trying, we, we-
But, but you don't know, Maxie, how hard it is.
No, you don't know what I know, and I don't know too much, but I know one thing, wait a minute, I know one thing, I know you don't live out here. I know you, wait a minute, hold up, you the biggest pimp out here. You don't do a tick, I'm like, who's highest paid employee guy? Big Bad Steve. You the, you, you a bigger pimp than the preacher. And, uh, what's that preacher's name? Uh, Reverend Ives. I love you too. You make a mess, don't worry, you told me. Oh, there you go. See, I could play, I could play a man with that. We need to try to find some help today.
Really?
I will call you. I'll call you, I'll, I'll make some phone calls, and vice versa, I'll give you a shout.
Is it illegal, if you take your stuff on and put it in the yard?
It's not our property, that's part of the problem.
I know, I said, just leave it.
That's like us going over and putting out rat poison in your backyard.
What would you do if that house was right next to you? Really?
I poured that, I poured that son of a gun out and filled it.
I can't even see into the yard because of the way the breeze is coming around.
I poured it up, so my neighbor, we're gone, your dog, I can't get it, and then I filled it full of rat poison.
Right, I'm talking about to, uh, Mr. Maguire and Mr. Mann, because he hadn't said a word. Really? What would you all do if it was right next to you?
I'm not getting involved with that part of the discussion.
But I'm asking you, what would you do if it was right next to you? You wouldn't, it's that day with you.
I don't have that problem, so I don't have an opinion.
So, it doesn't matter to you?
No.
That's all, so, so, you see what it just say it? Don't get that shit, don't get that. Really says it don't matter. Really? And Mr. Mann don't say nothing. You don't have to put in the same, Mr. Mann?
You live in Dayton, tell me. Let Jefferson County talk to me.
Be quiet.
Mary. Uh, two times.
I'm begging you for help.
It's gotta be something that you-
You've got to do something.
Well, we gotta find out what we can do, and then we can-
Right, that, that's what I'm saying.
If we can, if something can be done, we all just wanna know how to do it.
Did you see that lady just leave?
Well, that's okay, she's okay.
Mr. McGlocklin, I appreciate your response.
I appreciate you.
But you and him, you two are the ashamed of yourselves. Ashamed!
Tell him, get him down. That's not, that's not right.
Marion, you got three minutes.
Fine, I make it three minutes. I live on fifty-one forty Alton Road. Today, I got stung by two bees. I have to see my doctor tomorrow. Wonder why? Because that lovely zoom, zoom, zoom went up the street at the wrong time. I was trying to put something in one of my recycling trash cans. Next thing I know, I get stung on my ear, so I gotta see the doctor. I tried to take something out to put in the other trash can, I get stung on my hand. I call, I ask, I beg, I plead. Do something about that ATV. I don't even know if they come out. Next thing I know, I see it put up. But the next day, zoom, 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 zoom.
It's hard to catch them.
Yep. I'm asking. We live out here. I live on a street that is constantly being bombarded by drugs, people, cane horses, ATVs, motorcycles, little motorcycles, people speeding up and down the street. People can't walk across the street, because if you're not careful, guess what? You're gonna be eaten in the street. All I'm asking for you to do is do what we pay you to do, your job. Is that too hard? Is that too hard? And that lady, she has to go home crying, because she can't sit outside. She can't sit outside, she can't sit next door to the yard. I'm asking you. Do something, please. Just don't say, oh, well, it's not our job. We didn't put you in office to play twiddling rings. We put you in office to take care of our problems. Just like the president, the president is supposed to be taking care of the Americans' people's problems. Dayton has a mayor, we have youth. They're trying to do what they try to do for Dayton. I don't wanna live in Dayton, I wanna live in Jefferson, I wanna live in peace. If you can't live in peace, then look at our justice. And two of them, I already know, they're no good. They passed the buck. Okay, I'm finished. Three minutes, right, Jim? Three minutes, right?
You have twenty-five seconds.
Twenty-five seconds? You are not doing your damn job. You're sick of, okay, okay. You're not doing your job. You're not doing your job, and you, like he said, Jefferson is getting pimped. I call, you have to call Channel Two, Channel Twenty-two, and Channel Seven, that's our problem.
We're gonna take care of it.
Yep.
Right, we're gonna take it, we live here, we're gonna take care of it.
If you can't, what good are you? That's all I have to say. And Mike, I appreciate you, but two of you, I don't believe. I'm done.
Sheila Back.
Sheila Back, seventeen hundred, I want a court. Uh, uh, Steve, I had, uh, sent a text a couple times, a while back, about, uh, um, in front of my Aunt Mabel's house, where the pavement is, is coming up, it's all broken up. And it's been like that since last winter. And I thought they had gotten some supplies in to fix the road, so, there in on Hopewell, almost right in front of, um, oh, uh, what is that? Uh, it's Hopewell and Fortland.
Yeah, that's, that's painted.
Yeah, right there in front of, it's a-
Someone painted that?
No, it's not, this is a-
By today, it was painted.
You went by, are, were you talking about the same one that's a light white?
In the intersection, damn near, in the intersection of Hopewell and Fort-
Okay, so, I, well, I didn't go that way today.
It's got a dip in the asphalt, I don't think, I was looking at, I was looking at, I think, Jefferson Township did that? Yeah, huh?
Big hole. This is a hole in the middle of the street, it's probably-
Oh, no, no, this is a suck-in, this is broken, actually, it's sucked, it looks like a water department job.
No, no, you're talking about, uh, you're talking about down Tucson.
Okay.
That's, that's on Tucson.
Okay.
This is like right in front of Fortland, you can't miss it, it's like in the middle of the road. Um, if you could please, I, I know, uh, my aunt has been calling multiple times, and I reported it to, so, if you guys get out there and take a look at that.
We'll take a look at it, yes. Both of those, Hopewell and on Tucson, there by Aunt Mabel's, sorry.
Right, well, yeah, you know where she's at.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, some of the roads trustees that she's speaking about needs full repair, but you trustees have to approve that.
So, is that something they have to, like, hold a whole new, they make them, and then do a resolution and all that?
Put, put the whole road there, yes.
For the whole road?
Not the patches.
Okay, okay. Do you think that might happen before winter?
Would you pretend it?
It's up to trustees. I asked June, January, I asked June, February. We even asked to get the equipment made up to do it.
We just bought a cut-off, we just bought a cut-off, so we can do those patches, not a whole road repair, the patches she's speaking about.
Right, but she's asking, what are you gonna do, and, and there's more than just those two holes on those streets.
Start somewhere. Start with two holes.
Well, we've said we'd go out and check those.
So, can you tell me about when that would be?
I will call you when that will be.
Okay, that would be great. And, um, can I get, like, a, a breakdown of, like, a, um, like, we gave the reports from, like, Tracy and the agenda, but on the road department, or what the road work is being done, or has been done? Like, we get the agenda and the financial report.
So, they, you want them off in this month? There we have it.
Yes, so that way I can, I can see where they're working at, that way I don't have to worry about trying to report something over and over again. And if somebody that I know calls me and says that they're having an issue with this, I can say, oh, well, they're supposed to have fixed it.
Does, does, you need to do a record request, that you guys wanna have that available for her, or what?
No, it's just like the, like the report that Steve gives, that's all I'm talking about.
But he only does it once a month now, so-
Oh, that's fine.
So, ours may be another month.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't know.
Your report breaks things down by street.
Right, I'm just saying, if he wants a copy of it, it would happen.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it could be, like, out there, like, the agenda and the financial report.
I have no problem with that, you guys got a problem with that?
No, I don't.
It's very rules.
Guys, on a serious note, really, those that can't help themselves, we must help. You know, like-
Yes.
We all got old folks in our family, because we get old, you know, and we get a turn, so, somebody needs a little help.
With the help, with the help.
Yeah, yeah, you know? Yeah, I mean, I mean, it would murder to help him a little bit. And I did talk to the judge, and the judge told me, I said, they told me it was O R C and this, and that, and that, he said, if you cut somebody's grass, you're trying to help your township, and they bother you, he said, come see me. That's the judge at D one court, I talked to him personally. So, that is what he told me personally.
Yes.
So, so, my last thing, but, oh, we're not, I just wanted to ask you all for talking. Uh, don't we have another Henry already on the road department?
No.
We don't, okay, I thought I heard that name before, I just wanted to ask, that's like-
We did.
We did, okay, I thought I heard that name before.
He has trucks come over and break them down.
Yep. Oh, Peter.
Mr. McGlocklin, trustee reports.
Okay, thank you. So, um, the past couple weeks, um, you know, during my term of pay, I spent some time working on job description for administrator.
Yeah.
Um, I passed out, um, and, um, we're working on getting that taken care of. I sprayed the driveways and parked lots for the road department and all the fire stations. Um, I cut, uh, I got requested to cut a tree, when you come out of Station Sixty, and you look west, um, and I did do that, there's a bad, there was a bad blind spot there, so, when I turned, I turned that into a prime tree, maple tree. I turned that maple tree back, so the guys in the fire, except the, uh, the car went too bad, but when you're up in the height of the fire truck, you couldn't see very good. So, I got that taken care of, and, um, just driving around Township, um, still cursed by that catch basin on Fortland, um, it's still overflowing. Can't get that fixed, looked at, um, and just, you know, when, when a resident calls me, like, Pat, I'm gonna look at that house at fifty-nine nine, um, just trying to, uh, please appease the, uh, residents of Township. You ever received a phone from me at the administration office? I don't do the administration office, I have my own office at home, and my number is nine three seven, seven seven six, oh nine eight nine, call me whenever you want. That's all I got.
Mr. Mann.
Okay, I, I sit here, and I listen to everything that's going on, and, uh, no, I don't do a whole lot of talking, but I talk when I have something to talk about now. I've been talking about, uh, listening, I've been receiving calls about this problem, uh, of older. So, I know, I know about it. Talked to administrator quite a few times about that, to see what we can do. And, uh, then, we will check on this, see what we can do with these rats, and, uh, whatever we can do legally, we will make sure that's done, unless we're hurt tomorrow. I'm not, you know, I listen to what you're saying, and I try to do what I can. As far as the fire station, how long is, do we figure fifty-nine is gonna be?
Well, they can't, I mean, you gave me okay today, so they can get started tomorrow. They got the permit's full by the end of the week. Uh, the one thing you need to know is, that building has never had a permanent CEO, certificate of occupancy back when it was built. Somebody in the township did not file a writing, so you, we should have been inhabiting that building from the day it was built. So, this will resolve that problem, and this gets finished, we will have a, a full certificate of insurance, or, uh, occupancy. So, I, we, we don't know, because you're, you're at the mercy of the inspector, if they come out, when they get down.
We gotta work on that one, and, uh, get that building, not get it serviced, I suppose.
Appreciate that.
That's all I have.
My report, um, there's been a couple of culvert pipe jobs that have come up. Three, to be specific, that the road department was originally tasked to deal with, that had to do with getting that saw. Now, I started to looking ahead on doing that work, and I personally have visited Vendetta Rental Arts, all the major rental yards to see where we had accounts. This township, the road department, is not set up with any major rental yards. Employees have been asking for a credit card, and they don't have one, and certain trustees and fiscal officer refuse to issue a credit card to this staff. We don't even have an account to get drainage pipe. So, this do-it-in-house thing that some of the trustees advocate, our hands are tied to be able to do anything, so, if you can't rent or buy the material you need, what do you do? You outsource them. Now, a couple of culvert pipe jobs looked like small jobs, but I guess now that we're looking deeper into the situation, beyond what- beyond what we can do. Kevin and Maxie, you, uh, are spot on, this conflict that you see up front. Last meeting, we just got done with our lawyers telling us to get it together and play nice. But, we're all in agreement, everybody here hates Wolf, hates me.
No, we don't hate it.
No, no.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, you started, like I told you, at the meeting, we about to go at it, but when the meeting's over with, it's over. So, to use the word hate, you're telling a lie, because if I hate, we ignore it. Look here, we're gonna have things out in the meeting, and- You're telling a lie, because if I hate, we be knowing, look here, we're gonna act like that in the meeting, and then when the meeting's over, we should be able to sit down and say, you know, you kind of right about that, but nobody should walk in here with a hate for somebody.
Well, no.
That's a strong word.
Okay. I'm sitting at a traffic light. Sheila Back's husband flips me in the finger.
Just drives away.
That's somebody auditioning, is up for election, don't work with me.
Did you drive away?
No, I'm, he did, so.
So ignoring, what's it take to defend and drive?
And I'm saying.
Give them eye contact.
When you've got people that behave like that, how are we gonna be able to work together up front? I'm here for another two years.
Regardless of what we do, like or not, I'm here the next four years regardless of what I do or not. And I campaigned for you, and I grew up and I get you that, and then you said, the first thing you said is, I'm here for the next four years whether you like it or not. That are your words, but that don't matter, what we gotta do, we gotta make our township good.
Now, everybody, one, the one thing that everybody has lost sight of, they come into this meeting for barroom brawls, blame, try and catch you, get you, got you on tape, get a little sound bite that they can run around to the neighbors and all that, okay? This is the meeting for the board of trustees to conduct business, the department heads report to us, okay? The public has three minutes to make a comment during the meeting, now, the attitude in the audience is, they own the meeting, and they're allowed to come in and do whatever they want, we have constant interruptions, nobody respects the rules, they just insert comments, everybody laughing back there. Not. What I'm seeing from all this, especially in the last couple of meetings, we do need to have what is called a public hearing. That's where the public, everybody can talk, we can loosen up the rules, everybody can vent, and maybe we might get something done. But everybody's wanting to use the forum when we're trying to buy fire trucks and tools, and initiate projects that we have to legislatively do. But this is just, everybody's lost the purpose of this meeting.
What is the purpose of the meeting?
Well, we got resolutions, we're hiring people, we're buying equipment, okay? Because like Kevin said, like buying the fire tools, nobody should have even looked up or asked a question that should have went through in fifteen seconds.
Yeah, you should, it's our money, and first of all, you and me, either one don't know what they're buying. They tell you I'm buying six Kispert goodbye bars, what on heck, what is this?
This is all grant money.
Just because.
It's been, it's been.
Just because it's free by the dollar don't mean it should be wasted money.
Well, this is what we have to grant for. And what you don't understand is grant money is not a blank check. They put conditions on what you can do, how you can spend it, when you have to get it spent, and how you gotta document it. It's a very rigid process, you don't fill out the application right, you're out.